All right, I'm showing 5 o'clock. Now, uh, caller commissioning to order. So order, we're gonna welcome all of our guests. This time we have Roe call, Alarca.
Yeah.
In and over.
Sir.
Terry Hendricks.
Sir.
Roger Hill.
Here.
We have four, everyone's friends. Mr. Hill, please send a prayer after our pledge. If everybody's standing, pledge allegiance to the flag. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for another day here, goodness, and we thank you for life, all your many blessings and the most of all, oh, we thank you for your love and your grace as we're going through. Rest of the meeting, Lord, we just pray that you lead God and direct. Anything that's accomplished will be pleasing to you. And Christ, amen.
Amen. Yeah, Mr. Martin Gerald here. He's going to speak to the commission concerning County Road 625 that he's concerned. Mr. Hill? Come on in, that one. If you had paperwork.
Okay. I got talkings out here. And I make that easier on everybody, but I'm sure Mr. Lee and Mr. Perry heard me around long enough about this, this road. Um, you know, I just, I just wanna say, what I would like to say is 625, and you'll see it on the diagram, it loops all the way around from Rammer to Heathen in the corner on 46. Uh, back in the late eighties, some may beg to differ on this, but back in the late eighties, that was not a county road. It was being maintained by the county after 911. Uh, and recently this year, the, the county road sign that's on the Rammer end, the 625, was a green sign. Since I've talked to some, it's changed to a blue sign, which I know I don't have to explain the difference in too, I'm sure we all know that. But in this closing of this part of the road that I want to close, and this diagram is my diagram, this is no full flash or anything, this is not to scale or anything, I didn't see any ports and all that at this time. But if you'll see, 625 loops around from the Heathen end, it turns in, in the curve, it turns into 627, which goes out to Curtis Daniel's old trailer park, which is no longer a trailer park, there's still trailers out there. There was one renter out there, but he's gone, he's been gone about three months, and I talked to Tommy, and he said it'll never be a trailer park again, it's gonna be his permanent residence. I'm not denying him access to his property. I'm not denying Wendy Cooley, which I think her house is in her dad's name, I'm not denying her access to her property. Uh, Paul Smith, which is past, which I assume it's went to Everett Smith, but it's passing down the line to Shane Bivens, which borders his property on Rammer side. He's got three ten acre tracts right there. When you come in, I'm not denying him access to his property, 'cause if you'll see, on the Heathen side of 627, that's where the marker is. So in doing this, for one, it'll save the county money. For two, Mr. Lee won't have to hear from me once, twice, three times, four times a year, and us have conversation about the road from its scrape, there's no drought line, I got a garage door guy coming to the barn, put a new garage door, and he can't hardly get up in there 'cause it's mud. I understand maintaining the road, I do. I understand the simple fact behind it. We grade it, we drive on it after rain, I agree with Mr. Lee. And since then, it's better, you know, since you and I talked. But, oh, I just say we're saving county money in closing two tenths of a mile back there. It's not, from the beginning, we're coming in from Rammer, 625, it's two tenths of a mile up to the curve, and from the mailbox that you'll see, I've got labeled there, from the mailbox down to the Rammer end of 625, was never maintained by the county pre-911. When 911 came in, that's when it started to be maintained. The bus, which some may differ, never came through that road, so my last renter that was in that house, she had to come through to pick her kids up. My own grandkids, which lived in the house with my stepdaughter, had to go to the 625 end at the Heathen. So I'm saying I'd like to say this, one, it'll save the county money, two, it'll save a lot of headache, I'll maintain it myself, but three, I'm not denying anybody any access to their property. That's the main thing I say.
So, so off the Heathen end on 625, where Wendy Cooley lives, so they'll still come in to there, and that will still be a county road running all the way back to 627?
Yes, sir.
So the only part you're talking about is, is where you got your A running back towards Rammer? And you own both sides of the road there?
I own, from the mailbox, both sides of the road down to B. But from the mailbox back to the corner there, you'll see the dotted line, that's my corner. It comes, the plaque says Center of Oak City Road, to the mailbox.
Okay, so Paul Smith there, how do you get to his house?
There, there's no residence. That's a three ten acre.
He owns our property, he lives on the other side of 46. The property, what he's talking about is Paul Smith was deceased. I don't know if you've got that, now, I'm sure his son probably did. Even Paul Smith, there's people that don't own the property, which need to agree, I mean, there's a process, 'cause they like to go through, but we'll have to agree before we close it.
All, all landowners that connects, that connects to this property would have to be in agreement.
Mainly, mainly where your house is, and mainly whoever owns Paul Smith's property.
But from mailbox to A was opened up by Curtis Daniel and my ex-father-in-law. From B to the mailbox was never a county road until, until the county opened it up, that's what I'm saying. We got a county road sign where I don't consider it to be a county road.
I don't know about that, but I did drive the school bus in the early seventies, and one or two went around. Where there's county road, I don't like to drive.
There was, that was opened up, but that was growed up since then. But coming on the 46 side of the house, if anybody put down 46, any of y'all in here, there were steps going up that ramp. Those steps were there for the kids in that house to come down the steps to get on the school bus. So if it was a county road, then why would that really happen? That's, that's my main thing. I just say that it's been turned into a county road, yes, my, my father-in-law was, was an outlaw, and I'll admit that from everybody, and we can quote names, and he'd be fine with that. Oh, which, oh, he didn't know how to handle this process in a, in a, in a way that it could be handled. It's risen, he left it like.
We can start the process, I don't have a problem, but legal had to contest with all the property owners, and they'll have to be a paper signed, so it would have to be a public meeting.
So it'll be the owner of Paul Smith's property and I. The only two on the property owners that will have to agree to.
I don't know about how the 625 works in there, that's, that's a attorney question or a legal question, one.
Well, it probably would be why, just to make that 625, if we'd have to go through this process, make 625, 627, from coming off of Heathen side, just make that one whole street, one.
It's a green sign now, the 627 is green.
That's it. Six twenty seven is not.
And, and on the Rammer end it was, but I think since you talked, me and I, me and Lee, me and Terry, and I talked to Lee. And it got changed earlier this year, or having.
Even if it does.
That's right, that's right. I mean, I don't know if these would close it.
If everybody agrees. But my question is, is the two property owners that's involved in this would be Paul Smith and I.
Right, that's what I look at.
So Wendy Cooley would have those.
It's probably gonna be true.
Would have those supposed to say.
Just the owner of the property.
But that's on that end where I don't want it closed. So the only two involved in what I want would be us, and, which is gonna be Everett, Shane, and everybody.
It'll have to be whoever legally owned it, do you see?
Okay.
They'll have a time, they'll, they'll still be the owners, and it'll have, of course, I agree to it right now, but, okay. Like I said, there's a process, let Lee explain the process.
So what I do is, you have to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for next meeting. During the next thirty days, I contact, it'll be you and Everett, whichever one that property's moved on to, I'll see y'all there notifying y'all of the public hearing. We have a public hearing. They vote day to day to close it, the vote is to close it, and I have to advertise for two more weeks on the closure of the road after next close.
Okay. The only other thing I got is, is just understand, I'm not wanting the whole road closed. I'm just wanting, and I think it'd be fairly simple, it would be easier on you all, and I even went to Wendy and said, hey, I'll, I'll have maintained on that end, you'll save the county some money, but I think she kinda didn't want it on that end because of the trailer, but, trailer park issue, but it's not concerning her now, 'cause that's not where I'm at.
We'll just, he'll mark it up on our regular map, bring it back to us, and then we'll, Terry, give us a resolution, and we'll roll it.
Paul's property is okay with that?
Yeah.
So you go proceed from here.
We will go ahead, you go up here next meeting.
It's your first two months, give it up.
And that's, that's mine. You don't have to, it's 66, okay? You know, I'm okay.
All right, we good? I got anything else? Thank you.
I'll do it.
Can I give you the?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You want us to print 627?
That's it. So really, we have to.
We're gonna use the turn.
I would give you a turn. I would give you the camera.
Y'all, most of you I think know Mr. Mr. Long Peter, he is over the chamber, he's kinda short, but, uh, we'll look over that. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, first, let me, let me tell you why I'm this tall, and then it's that they're saying that when you're a little boy or girl, and you're not listening to your parents, they speak to you, and they kick your butt a lot, and the taller you are, the more juice in the butt. So I will show you, you must mess up a lot. So, thank you for, for having me. Reason I am here, and Mr. Roxton already told me, my time is limited, but the reason I am here is to be overviewing in person for the ones that I haven't met in person yet. I'm very excited to be the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Cleveland County. I'm not gonna bore you with my background and what I've done and where I've been, because that's gonna take up at least twenty hours, at least twenty minutes, so the main thing for you to know is I have a master's degree, and my majors are business development, crisis management, change management, marketing, and I think another three or four. I've been in business development my, almost my whole life, most of it in financial services, banking, insurance, that kind of stuff. Last ten, fifteen years, I spent a lot of my, almost of my time in Africa, doing work for credit unions in Africa, trying to get those stocks out of poverty and get them into the financial system. But now I'm excited to be back in Cleveland County. The first time I was in Cleveland County was back in nineteen eighty-one. I was an exchange student from the Netherlands, and they dropped me in Muscatine. I know when I was in that application process, I was like, I'm going to New York, LA, San Francisco. I got close though, Muscatine, you know, it's almost as good as LA is. Then the first day when I went to Heathen High School, I was in my senior year, I met two amazing people, both of them are still in my life. First of them is John Merrill from this town. These are all my best friends, I talk to him each and every week, we try to solve the world problems each and every week, but he always, probably because of me, he has an answer to everything. And the second one is my current wife, Kay Ashley, I met her the first day of school. I kept in touch with her in the last few years, like six, seven years, with social media, we called up again, and I told her one day I'll be back, and I'm back. And now I'm once again the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. Reason I am here is I wanna give you an update of the current status of the Chamber of Commerce, and try to get some connection with the commissioners, because I think we have a similar kind of thing that we're aiming for, and that's to get more prosperity to Cleveland County. I'm also with the Kiwanis, and when we had our last meeting, I told you they had, they were doing this fundraiser for poor kids in our county that don't have shoes to go to school, and they told me, they ended up almost with two hundred and fifty kids that don't have enough money for shoes. So that's, that's one of my most important things, is to get, you know, the county in such a way that we're gonna hopefully do something about poverty and get, you know, more money going around the, in the county. And then I think the Chamber of Commerce is one of the organizations that should, you know, take part of it, and should go ahead and try to solve the problem. The current status of the Chamber, I think his brother did a really good job, Chad was the executive director of the Chamber in a really, really bad time, because most of the time that he was the executive director, we were in the COVID, correct? So that meant that, nothing, you know, all of the events that we used to do back in the, you know, back in the days, all of those were canceled, nothing was allowed, and the outcome of that is that most of the businesses that were members of the Chamber stopped being a member of the Chamber, because they were like, you know, nothing's going on, nothing's happening. And, and the other side of it is that most of those businesses were struggling to even, you know, make it back. So, the current status is that we have about ninety members that are active, and we used to have close to three hundred. So you can imagine what, what COVID did to the Chamber of Commerce. And the, the bad side about it is also that those members are paying fees, and the fees is what we need, you know, to pay the overhead costs of the Chamber building, you know, gas, water, insurance, all that stuff. So, my major goal right now is to get back to the foundation of the Chamber, trying to get a financial stable basis, trying to start up the events that we used to do, trying to get more involved in, you know, what the commission is doing, trying to get more involved in all of the organizations that are having the same goal as we all do, and that's getting Cleveland County money in our county, so we can do things that we need to do. And I know it's a vicious circle, because if there's no businesses, there's no money, but when there's no money, you cannot, you know, create an environment that you want for businesses. And I don't want us to be a new Calhoun County or something like that, so we need prosperity, we need businesses to grow and to keep things going. So whenever there's something I can do for you, please, you know, I really wanna team up with the commission to see what the role and what I could do out of the Chamber of Commerce to make, you know, the business, business environment better, to get more business attracted to our county, and by doing that, you know, getting more money for the county. The first thing that we're gonna do as an event, I'd like to invite all of you to be there, is on October the twelfth, Wednesday, October the twelfth, at seven thirty in the morning, so it's gonna be an early one, we're gonna have a breakfast and business at Carillon Oaks. Breakfast is gonna be sponsored by one of our members, so the whole event is free, so we would like you to be there. If you know of any businesses, business owners, managers of businesses, please invite them. We have a great speaker, his name is Tim Hubblestone, and he is gonna have a speech about inspiration, the power of inspirational leadership, and even when you're in the commission, it would be amazing to get some information about, you know, what could you do to be an inspirational leader. Once again, if there's any questions, please reach out to me, I'm gonna leave some of my business cards here, I'm also gonna leave some of the invites of the purchase and business invite, and I wanna thank you once again for your talking.
I just wanna bring it up, I have spoke with the commission, and I talked with the county attorney about coming by and cutting grass and work, you know, doing some in-kind services at, at the Chamber, and also we do the farmer's market. And most of the time, we just do it when we have time, we don't really set a schedule, so we wouldn't tire ourselves in to, you know, 'cause we gotta take care of the poorhouse and all the other facilities. But I just wanted to bring it up to the commission that we've been doing that, so if anybody has a question about it.
You know, I just have a difference of opinion in that. I mean, if that's what the commission wants to do, it's no, no disrespect, Chad is my, you know, my brother, but I feel like you're a different organization, and I don't know that we should be sending tax money to that. But that's just my opinion, but it's minor, and it's not a lot of money, but I know something was said about, you know, the time that, I don't know how much time it takes, how much time, you know, we stopped a while ago, I think Crystal brought it up during the past meeting, how much time Fred had. So I don't know, how much time does it take to cut the grass there?
Well, if we keep it cut, you know, you can, you know, most time, we always go through the, like, we'll do the Penn Holdie Trail, and we'll come through, we'll set up, usually we got inmates with us coming doing the weeding, so we probably spend about an hour, maybe hour and a half and then just cut the grass and weeding.
It, it's, it's very minor, I just, and it's, and it's no disrespect, I just, that's just my, you know, take. But if that's, you as a commission, if I were to do that, I think you, and Mr. Owen says we can, and not, not be in any kind of trouble at all.
The primary thing is, it's a courtesy extended to an agency here in the county that supports building a tax route if the county is a part of it. My suggestion of not making a formal resolution is not tiny, it's true, a responsibility. If we can't get there, then it's just a courtesy that we weren't able to extend at that particular time. If we do a formal resolution, it makes it something that we have to do, and mandates probably a budget line by the court, whereas now, if you've got the time, we're extending that process.
I'm, I'm not gonna buck you, I'm just saying, you know, I'm being honest with you, you, I think y'all know how I feel, but it's a small, it's a small one. And I'm not anti-Chamber, please know that, but I am, I am, you know.
I just don't wanna get in trouble for it. I wanna make sure that we all.
Well, we truly appreciate it, and like Evan was saying, we, we never reach out to him, like, you know, you have to do it like now or, you know, tomorrow, it's always you go, go with the flow, and whenever he has time available.
You know, a lot of times, when we can't get to it, 'cause it's too close to the highest, if I'm on my mower, I'll run by and knock it down, and I do it probably forty-five minutes, but pray that probably that's an hour. Let me get to a cigarette.
Any other questions?
Nice phrase.
Do a little bit of that, that's a good idea, put that spray on everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Maureen, for sharing.
Go on, I'm gonna leave you.
The invites, court.
I've never given.
Did anybody else have any questions? Can you get separate reading cards?
Probably I'm the good one.
I am.
Have you reached out, did you get the original list of three hundred that we had to start with? You know, the three hundred business?
I can help out with the.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you've got that list, if you've been going, reaching back out to them, see how.
Yeah, so that's one of the things I'm working on right now, is reaching out to all of those people.
'Cause I'll tell you, for almost two years, I never even got an invoice.
I know, that's another thing, the invoice having, invoices since company, they were not sent to businesses, so that's another thing that I'm.
Because doing all these river cuttings and all the stuff that y'all do, and y'all do a great job, you know, just to, you know, like y'all getting rich doing, and I'm pretty sure y'all doing it.
Thank you.
See, yes, sir. Can I say, you, you know, unless the commission wants to put you on the agenda, is anybody in here would like from?
I promise it won't take long.
Pete, he wants to.
Bids.
Think about the bids.
Bids.
That's on the consent agenda. Y'all have to add it, make a motion to add it if you want to add it. That's all. Or you add. Make the motion by Mr. Hendricks to add, and you second. Wait a minute, I mean, all in favor saying aye?
I promise I can take three minutes. I just wanted to remind all, I just, a year ago, that you got some bids coming up, something you did last year. I hadn't had a chance to look at those, but I sent some, only put spray at her side again this year, and we've increased, this year sprayed three times. Road twice, now we got it, which is marvelous, and what I would ask you to do is consider that resolution you passed about two years ago that said you would not spray anymore. That resolution still stands, there's still no expiration, they don't, and it has not been taken off, it still, still stands, so I would just ask you, please consider not spraying as you said you would. That's all that, thanks.
All right. We have no more official board members than I'm aware of. Bid openings, awards and presentations, is there anything needed, open up or anything? No public hearings, consent, you know, everybody have a chance to consent, make the motion or accept. Has it all been initially?
Yeah.
And it's all, everything?
Yes.
Nothing went uninitiated? So we got a motion to accept, do I have second? You're not here, so you got second, okay? Any discussion?
I have on the, the bid, on this big list, this right here, this is just strictly the bidding bids. It's not, it's nothing else, it's just the bids.
It's not, it's just one bid.
So that's the pretty, yeah.
We gonna book? Yes. Yeah, give me a second.
Okay.
Pretty, I'm hungry. No, I'm hungry, I had a big lunch, but I was just, a big lunch. So what is the difference between the, the ARCA and all business? B, is this the same or different?
I see.
That's, that's not, it's the same.
Is that what, do you think we have two places?
That's completely different, it's the same. But the same agenda thing, the whole resolution.
Yes, I have. We had a vote, we had a vote, yeah. I thought you just approved it.
I made a motion.
That's the, the resolution, that's the resolution that they changed from, basically it's just, goes from federal state with all requirements. We're talking about it last month, but.
But now, these are two separate issues, ain't right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the, the EMS equipment's on new business, but that's agenda, it's just the bids and the, the new contract for the, and that's all that's in the agenda.
This, they see, EMS?
That's your SP business.
I'm looking at this back, 'cause I don't have a copy of this, I'm sorry.
Do you mind?
My thing, my ass.
Yeah, that's.
My fault, I seen it, I, I was looking at all that, I seen it.
We could have a string, man, I think that's one.
I remember right here. Yeah, all right, I'm back on the right page, now, all, any other discussion about that? All in favor saying aye?
All right.
Thank y'all for getting me in order.
Hey, what's that, the consent agenda?
Motion.
Yes, sir.
That's a consent, you, you can get with that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, y'all got me totally confused.
It's my fault, I was asking about the consent agenda, but I was looking at the agenda and I kept looking at.
Look at your swing your horn this time, you just get behind next one.
I just made a mistake and I'm very lucky.
Time to go eat, right?
All right, this is a new business now. We are gonna vote on that. Whereas, this is automated, whereas it is the responsibility of the Cleveland County Commission to pass a yearly budget for the upcoming fiscal year in September meeting. Therefore, after review and deliberation, the county commission hereby adopts the tax fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget version. And as of right now, we're, we're not there, right? Okay.
You can table it, somebody's like a memo.
I'll take it, okay.
Okay. Our motion to table, second. Any discussion?
You can table this until, continue this meeting following the budget, continue.
All in favor saying aye? Yeah, right, this is how we sit out, too. All right, what I've picked up on, here we go, resolution authorizing expenditure of the. Arca revenue replacement funds for government services, whereas the county has received, we're on a vital state monthly political covenant fund. Award of the year, American Rescue Plan Act from the U.S. Department of Treasury totaling two million eight hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars. We sent a court's final move issued by Treasury on January sixth, twenty twenty-two, has been duly designated as revenue replacement funds. Whereas these public funds may be used in the purpose of providing government services, whereas the Cleveland County Commission has determined that. Shown to Article three, six, and forty-three, dot zero, two, of the Constitution of Alabama of nineteen oh one, is within the authority of the county to provide for programs related to emergency assistance services. Including programs related to ambulance services, and whereas the county wishes to use a portion of its Arca revenue replacement funds to enhance the delivery of emergency medical transport assistance services in the county. And whereas Cleveland County EMS, a nonprofit entity, is the sole provider of emergency medical transport assistance services based in the county. And whereas the commission has determined that this one-time appropriation to Cleveland County EMS to enhance the delivery of emergency medical transport assistance will provide a direct benefit to a significant portion of citizens of the county by facilitating the delivery of these services. And now therefore be resolved by the commission as follows, the county hereby makes a one-time appropriation of up to fifty-five thousand dollars of this Arca revenue replacement funds to Cleveland County EMS for purchase of medical equipment. And it's necessary to ensure that each of the emergency transport vehicles owned and used by Cleveland County EMS is equipped with cardiopulmonary resuscitation and monitoring need to treat and respond to life-threatening emergencies in the county, both on scene and your transport to medical facilities. C C E M S will, with the assistance of the county, its technical consultants, should develop specification for the equipment to be purchased. Contracts for the purchase of equipment shall be entered into, into, by free and open competitive bidding and sealed bids to the lowest responsible bidder. The bidding process, including required notices, shall be conducted in accordance with the state law requirements for the purchase of goods and services in excess of fifteen thousand dollars by county. Cleveland County EMS shall consult with the county's technical consultant regarding compliance with these requirements. The chairman of the commission is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Cleveland County EMS consistent with the provision of this resolution and applicable state and federal law with the distribution of the funds allocated here. Said agreement shall require a amendment that funds should be distributed upon showing of compliance with procurement requirements referenced here in. Motion by Mr. Henderson, second, and it's, uh, any discussion?
Can we have both the bids up here in front of us?
If that's part of the agreement that's entered into, that you've authorized the chairman to sign, you can say that's where you want the bids to be opened.
You gonna be there to be open to bids?
Sir?
I mean, I want somebody up here to be there to be open to bids.
The resolution refers to, in paragraph four, the chairman of the commission is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with C C E M S. That agreement, you could specify that you want the bids to be either open here or required that a member of the commission be present for the opening of that.
Would you like to add to an amendment?
Well, it's just, we've got to enter into an agreement. I would imagine that whatever agreement you're gonna have, we're gonna want counsel to review pursuant to your previous resolution.
I just want to see the bids, ever how we need to do it.
Okay.
I could, I'm gonna be here in my office, I can live it to you, it's, it's a lot more likely that we miss this resolution.
I can't remember the lady's name, but she went so far. She, when she was up here and her and Tracy got into the discussion. With my understanding from what I heard, Tracy didn't want to do the bid deal, he wanted to pick a stunt. I wanna make sure we do the bid.
She was, she was saying that, that she didn't give the bids back already, the way that I do. Is there supplies in that hand that we have?
If we won't pay money if they don't comply with the cure costs.
Can you just take a sentence in there, we get a copy of the bids?
In the agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at it at the meeting.
I don't think we have to, I think he's still in.
I can put something in other agreements, just to be all for.
Okay, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion cares. Portion staff.
We don't have a lot going on, but we do have two audits going on. Of course, one is probate judge's office, but they've been waiting down here, usually they just use this office and one day we, but they've had asks for six years of bank statements for probate judges' office for three different accounts. So a little newer, most of it's been on my, on my staff to, to pull all those bank statements, but they've been involved in that. And of course, we've been involved in budget meetings and all kind of been putting information to get, to make that happen. I have eight new reports, ninety-nine percent done, just gotta do a couple little checkovers. I have eight new reports out for the entire county for end of August. Made some corrections, it's been easier to look at almost a whole year and tell things that needed to be corrected, like things that got put in the wrong line and that kind of thing, so that's what I've been working on today. Other than that, it's pretty much just normal, normal business stuff. Tyrol's A P's, we got to A P this week, we burned down Tyrol this week, so we're, we're pretty good shape, just gonna get ready for next budget meeting.
We're getting closer to getting anything resolved as far as the show's required happening for you.
The bid losses has already been sent to Cleveland paper. Tracy made this, so we're on it, and it's already, everyone's got that set up to go in the paper for two weeks. I believe it goes in, I don't care if it was in this week or next week, it'll actually be in the paper. So we advertise for two weeks and then we'll open bids. I'm trying to remember the date that she gave me, I would say it's September, the. This is the next handout, I'm sure there's a bid up for it. Yeah, I'll leave it for some category, so we can move on to the next slide. I mean, I just said so, I mean, it's, it's gonna be fine, I think it, it just is, you know, but. We are, it, it does look favorable, but we are, we are trying to get, get it in again.
Any questions?
Have they ever told us on the, I studied on, I'm not familiar with correctional, maybe you've been on?
She's, that's what she was thinking to me before the hour one, you. She sent me an email that I've got, I'm sure it's right now.
Okay.
Uh, but she's worked on that issue, she has been sort of interested.
Okay.
So going back to the counter resistance, I do most of the, the, here, but I'll, I'll.
When she found out who, who's she?
We still, we still see the beer.
Okay.
You guys are starting processes, you need to make a motion to add that, yeah, right?
I want a motion to add that, right? That is part of the process. Six twenty-five, all right?
Okay, just, just hope to add it to the agenda, so we go, we have seven.
Second.
I'm second. Any discussion? All in favor of adding this to the agenda, we go down tonight? Motion cares? All right, so motion B to.
Whereas it's the responsibility of Cleveland County Commission to address road closures, and then brought to the attention of the county by citizens. Therefore, the commission directs that the engineers should schedule a public hearing for the issue of the closure of the county road six twenty-five at the, October eleventh. October eleventh, five p.m. Hopefully it'll work, but now, cause I know.
Any other discussion about that? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion cares?
I have a deal request. I found a, it's a new back blue rover, it is a piece of useful equipment, but it'll be something we can use. Way to do, well, I have one over there, that's what, I'm gonna kind of split that crew up, I have one crew that's doing the grinding and the prepping and then one crew that can do the talker, but I'll set up still as long as, as long as I have this on. Deal request for fourteen, nine, nine, five.
No, we need to add that. Okay, I'm sorry. Saying we, we have to take. All right, so I have motion in second to add this to the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion cares? Motion to pass, say it's in?
I have a motion to pass.
I second it. Any discussion?
Sort of, because in both of them, pretty small.
Just one deal, you got one in your book, yes. All in favor of the passing this P O, say aye?
Aye.
That's all. Okay, any questions for you? Would you vote?
I sent out an email regarding the full resource officer for some points, where there's still some discussion that needs to be addressed. If anyone wants to respond, or if we need to sit down and talk about it, or all we can can, I think there's some fine tuning that's something to do.
What a question they have. Like I hear on the road, we can't get a deputy, we just don't fill the slot, and sometimes it takes a while to fill that deputy's slot. So we're looking at total of three deputies. So in this contract, all it says is I need these people here this time. So we're signing an agreement, they're also putting money into the game, too. What happens? I mean, it could be, we could lose two deputies like that, and we don't have one, a resource officer at the school. What would, there's gonna be something in there that says, we're gonna do the best we can to put a deputy there, because I mean, any job, at the road department, all these county jobs, you can't never, you might not be able to fill these jobs.
It's in section three, B one, as the third sentence of the agreement talks about staffing levels, recognizing the staffing level for potential issue. Uh, it says, each agency, which would be the commission, reserve the right to remove an S R O at any time if staffing levels fall below, except to the norms, or in the event additional officers needed elsewhere, et cetera. And we just have to notify the board before making that read, sign it. My concern with that paragraph was in the first sentence, where it says we shall assign full-time law enforcement officers. I believe that that should be changed to language along the lines of, is expected to subject to mandatory.
Right, what you put in that email?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's what we're on.
Oh, you, can the sheriff sign a contract for the board base case, and just leave us side?
Not with the funding or apartments, or whatever.
Okay, look, this is it. They want the S S U T money. If we agree to give them a percentage of the S S U T money, and it goes towards the, no, I don't care, we've been working on it. But if we give them a percentage, they agree not to, not to come after any of the rest of it, then that's the funding that they need. So I think that the sheriff and the board base case should do a contract, give us something?
I don't wish.
He, he would go, just point that we're coming up with, just want the sheriff anyway, just like we're going to jail, whatever's on the air.
If you don't, I'm just trying to say it, if you don't tie the S S U T, then they gonna come back later trying to get that again.
That's one thing in the agreement that we need to tie, S S U T money to this.
And you also, I guess y'all already read that contract, they not responsible for any raises or nothing going forward, they gonna pay sixty-nine thousand dollars from now to the end of time.
Well, the contract's only good, a year, then it's, then it's.
Five years.
Yeah, but we've got, got a thirty day, got a thirty day, I think. We got a house to dig, you know, and who knows what kind of diseases gonna come through, we have to shut the schools down and the bus.
Go ahead, hold, if you didn't do this, I know y'all, but if the state legislature passes something, that's got override, S S U T, S S U T, right?
Let me ask you this, Jason, if you tie S U T in, in, if somewhere in that contract, it can be stated that at any time that S U T, that S S U T money is taken from us, that that eliminates the contract.
We can certainly go ahead, you know, sure.
Yeah, that, because if we don't have that funding, where are we gonna get the money out? If they're gonna, if, if the legislature changes that law and gives them the money, then they should be able to do it, if, to, but it needs to protect us in some way, yeah.
Is that what you gonna say, Mr.? What are you gonna say?
That's what my concern is, I would say why can't you make it simple? Why do we need a seven things contract to do this? I think they're gonna protect it a lot more than we get.
But that's reason we don't aim.
Even that is changed, is they're still protecting more.
And that's the nature of education, and a lot of the things is gonna talk about, like the curriculum and the requirements, and what's gonna be happening at school. We're not getting down into the day-to-day operation of the schools itself. We're providing one additional person per school dealing with the law enforcement issues.
Okay, give your opinion on this, same we pass this, we do it, they're out there. Okay, when Will Johnny and, and Joe over here gets in a fight, and one of them gets a broken nose, and the officer don't get there till the whole deal is over with, are we liable?
That's why I suggested we put it in identification, a whole harmless degree, in this topic, so that they're identifying us from anything, if something occurs and it's not an officer process.
There gonna be some parents out there that, that wanna use this for everything, and we're only trying to get it there for like mass use or some major disaster, not too fast, if we need to, I think.
And that's, a lot of the language that they're talking about, also the school's policies, they're saying, we need. And that's, a lot of the language in there talking about also, the school's policies, we can say, the administrators' responsibilities. If we have the indemnification warrant, then if the officer's not there, not available, they're holding us, he not holding us liable, and that's it. So, that's why they need to put that in there.
For us to be able to move forward with this, there need to be a meaning. To me, needs to be a meaning point, a commission, and our lobby, and the, I mean, the sheriff. For us to come under the same umbrella and then make the board of interpretation.
But, and that's fine, too. The ultimate say-so is gonna be this board, right?
But we need, we need to have a...
There's no sense. The sheriff is not gonna be deciding the contract.
But the sheriff, we all need, it needs to be, somebody's gotta need for the sheriff to make sure that everything is covered and that he understands.
Then, if we're talking about something that we're just wants to sort of iron out a contract, can it not be brought into an executive session with the sheriff coming into the executive session? But just to discuss the legal ramifications of the sheriff in the contract, we're not using anybody's good name. We're just going over a contract to say...
I don't know that it'd be to the specific executive session issue.
Okay.
He's the local supervisor, so...
Yeah.
Can we pull one by committee?
Maybe, add on committee, but again, if you haven't got any, it has to be public, public meeting requirements as well. If you just have a commissioner sitting down with the sheriff to discuss, that's less than four.
Well, this, let me ask this question. Me personally, the only issue I got with the sheriff is whether or not he's gonna pull that officer when he needs it. And, does anybody else have anything other than that?
Well, I don't, I don't say that they need to do it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's what the sheriff wants.
Well, and he's constitutional officer, but he's got to fulfill, doesn't, doesn't mean that he's gonna fail or...
What we're saying.
Right.
Just go waste on a contract, he's still gonna do whatever he's...
Yeah, so we're ready to look at the school board regarding the funding.
Not so old as they give you money, not telling.
We've got to be pulled together, I mean, get this pulled together.
I think, I, I...
You may, you may just, maybe for the sheriff.
For sheriff to make a deal.
I'm just voting. Current county.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll be, I'll be over tomorrow fishing up over there. So, I'll go in and talk with John and see what he wants to get.
Get all the time.
I'll be in that position later in the morning. We, we, what schedule?
That's what we just need to get this, we need to get it off, you know, right now, we're just going back to it.
I think we've come up with a lot with, with trying to come in there, before we're gonna learn them.
They need to know, the sheriff.
Has the board of its cases in your hands?
We probably need to send them a file. I mean, we're not saying that...
We're, we're, we're putting our program together, I think, too, I stopped listening. But then, you know...
Not yet, wait, okay. Any, yeah, the question.
Yeah, if you hear a, if you're physical, so, of course, you know. Just talk quickly, the news, but just do not...
Okay, I'll put my penis.
EMS, you know, like, if they're asking us for money, we just voted to give them money. I know we can't tell the board what to do, but how can we almost just something to the board?
Tell the board?
You know, that, um, but I'm, I'm serious, I've been, I hadn't been over in the last year because of COVID and all this stuff. But I've been in front of that board a dozen times, trying to get them to look at something, and they wouldn't take a look at it.
Well, I, let me just say this, this board that, that you, that's in place right now is probably gonna be strong as forward.
Yeah, they're gonna look at Tracy, I remember, they're gonna say, no, they're gonna say, no.
No, this board does not, they do not. And he's been told many times, I'm telling you, this isn't strong board. They're, they're pretty much, um, have put him in his place several times. So, I think that you need to, I don't know, I know my board member, I have a lot of faith in Paul. And my husband too, I called him, they called me when there was issue.
I don't mind just going talking to all of them, I can, you know, I don't need to stop them. When I talk to all of them, it, I'm just asking a question, is there anything I can do other than just request? What, what the deal is, I want an ambulance around here. And they keep coming and asking for money, they've got a gazillion dollars over there. If the place ain't making, if the nursing home ain't making money, then somebody's running off. And so, I keep getting these, oh, we came for it. Well, they seem to be able to four, five, or six ambulances, and two or three office ladies over there, and I was crap. I would like to see an ambulance around.
I don't, I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit you, someone like their official, from telling that board. You know, out of respect for the citizens in my district, if I don't see an ambulance around here, you will never get my vote again for any funding for the EMS. You're speaking for yourself and your district and your vote, not, not as the commission as a whole, you can tell them.
I already done that.
Well, that's one thing about this truck. This truck, the crew is a crew up nine after light, because the north end and, and the south end were so spread out, it takes longer for them, they can get the ground, or they can get to the north end of the county, or to the south end of the county. So, this truck with this equipment is allowing them to spread out more. But, yeah, we need, they, their goal, the last meeting that I went to, their goal, this is what they discussed, is having the ambulance in each location.
They were discussing that eight years ago, I think.
Their goal is to have ambulance in, in each location. And then they get, they were using the ambulance, the EMS is using, I think it's like seventy-nine percent of the, um, four million pounds goes towards, I think it's about seventy-nine percent, goes to the, goes to the ambulance service.
So, you would, you would think, you would think that the nursing home would be making bucket pools of money, which I had looked at for financial, which I'm, I gotta go to the next meeting and request the financial. But I don't understand why it's so many, because I guess...
Four hundred and fifty-six.
I don't know, based on...
Yeah, so...
It's under half a million.
Yeah, and I think about, I think about four hundred, that goes for the...
A large portion of that, okay?
You're, you're... Get here from SRO to EMS.
Well, I think we just close out the meeting, and I, we're at that discussion tomorrow, Mr. Anderson, I think he just had that question.
Two most isolated places in the county, pleasant roads and food parks. They need the SRO's system. So, we need to get busy on that.
Alright. Any other questions, Mr. O? Just to make sure. There's no business discussion items, I know we was kind of talking about some of the things. It's on, any other discussion items? We're looking at continuing this meeting so that we can vote on the budget. So, is there a date that you guys, ladies, if you don't want to make to do that?
If I may, I believe, Mr. Anderson, for the issue that you continued your budget meeting until today. You need to reopen that meeting to set the date for that meeting. At this time, I would recommend that you continue this meeting to immediately follow the budget meeting that's about to be reset. So, I'm ready.
Okay, we're continuing this meeting to, um...
To immediately follow the budget meeting.
To immediately follow the budget meeting.
We, we really need to continue this, uh, but we've already continued it, uh...
She's mad.
Okay, just say that, okay.
It was continued after this regular schedule.
Okay, voting to continue the meeting, set immediately. So, we have a motion?
Say a motion.
Say a motion. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Now, you need to re-adjourn your budget meeting at seven, okay?
Alright, can I?
Call, just read the word, Jerry.
So, it's the sound where you're reaching the budget meeting. Now, what date would work for everyone?
Anytime in the next ten days, I'm for it. See, I'll take one.
I think that's it. That's all we need, actually. That I'm concerned, that's what I need to say.
You're from here.
Do you have a what?
That's gonna be fine, if we can work everything out, because if we don't work everything out, she has to go back and do something. I ain't gonna do this longer till the end of the month.
Three more minutes?
Wouldn't be a day this week if we have all that time to do, so...
I mean, I can do it. I can do anything before lunch on Thursday, or I can do anything all day for that, of course, it's, you can't... I can't do anything next week, of course, I can do it.
Thursday.
So, you're saying six, ten?
I can do anything up to lunch on the fifth, eighth, or all day, six, ten. That way, there's some...
The six, ten. So, the six, ten.
That's right.
Good one, Paul.
That's easy.
I'd like to sign the last.
Okay, so it's gonna be Friday, the sixth thing, the... So, we're gonna continue this meeting now, until, is this work for everybody? Six thing, Friday at one P M. Any other to continue?
I'm ready, most of them do.
Okay. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
We're gonna have to adjourn tonight.
Right?
No, there's no adjournment. We don't, we're gonna do it. So, when you come back on Friday, if you come to your final version, determination for the budget meeting, then you'll adjourn that meeting, you'll reopen this commission meeting, and you have one resolution on the table that you'll hook to a move from the table, and you'll vote to pass it based on your conversion.
We can continue that, we can continue that, but you can work on it, just say it.
We put that again, you might, Jason, we put that, my shit, I got that. Being far, right? You got it? I'll be in the office Friday, we need to...